I know Kathy, you had mentioned speaking.
On everything now?
No, this is on the public hearing.
Oh, no, no.
I'm sorry.
Well, I want to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Then if you don't have any more public comment?
No, there is one.
We do have public comment.
Just on the overlay. So my comment is that I think most of the summer, there was a lot of discussion about what the overlay would actually do to Benita Beach Road. But specifically, one thing that seems to have just very recently come up, I believe at the first reading, was on already approved developments. So I know there's a few developments that went through a long process. Ours certainly did. We went through a two-year process to get our zoning changed. And now, from reading the first reading, they now have in there where if you're not 50% built of your new buildings, then basically all of that goes out the window and you now start from point one. And a development our size is not something that in three years you can build 50% of your development. So basically, we went through two years of zoning. We then came back around after all of that was approved. We then did all of our planning and last spring, we started selling condos to actual owners. We have owners that have purchased condos in the buildings as they are. I don't believe that much of ours conflicts with the overlay. I think it's very consistent with the overlay. And so we like the short setbacks against the road. But being that that came up two weeks ago, we have not had enough depth to have our attorneys genuinely look at it and see if there really is anything significant there. So far, in a cursory look, again, it looks like we're in complete alignment with this overlay plan. But I just have a fear there on putting in this hard requirement of if you're not 50% built out, and if we turn out to find out that something in that approved zoning that we did, that, again, we've already sold condos to people to make sure that our buyers were legitimate buyers, we had them put 100% of their purchase price upfront. So these are people that are very committed to the development as is. So we just want to make sure that if you guys are voting on it today, I don't know if the 50% is the appropriate number, or maybe there's some period of time there where you allow, again, because this isn't something that has been going on through the whole summer. Through the whole summer, there was a lot of discussion of the actual overlay. This concept of we're now going to take recently approved zoning projects and we're now going to make them fit this new overlay that was just created this summer, that's very, very recent. And so I would just ask that if that's the case, that there is some period of time that that can be reviewed, whether that's a six-month period of time where those owners can come in and review that, find the deviations and get, have some opportunity to kind of, I guess, find some middle ground between the two. But yeah, just that's all I wanted to say. I can't say more because we honestly haven't had the time to thoroughly look at it deeply enough to see if there's any kind of inconsistency. For now, it doesn't appear that there is, but I just worry in case there is.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Are we, Derek, what's next?
So the next step would be if you have any questions for staff, you want to address the comments made with regard to pending projects. What I would say is I am looking to make three changes. And I put them, what I've, the way I've incorporated them is they'll go into the wherethes and then be incorporated as an applicability to the entire ordinance, and that were the three things that I previously mentioned. People came in during the moratorium who built voluntarily to the proposed plans. Those projects that were listed as exempt under the moratorium, including Horizon Park, which came in again afterwards to confirm, at least to the degree that they had come in for those approvals, would be, would be consistent with this plan. And then Angler's Paradise Settlement, which again was coming through during the time of this. If you wish to consider something else for other applicants who are pending or have approved projects but may not reach those 50% goals, I'd want to hear direction from that.
Well, I haven't kept track of all these various developments, but each of the four people who spoke up, on the face of it, made sensible requests, right? So, I mean, I think it was Mrs. McMichael said something about she had a use that she was previously allowed and now she wouldn't be allowed, and so I don't know what that's all about. And then changing these standards, two people made comments about that, the changing what's in place, how much has to be built out, that seemed like a fair comment to me. And I forget the third one, but I think you should be, we should be dealing with that, unless you, unless staff disagrees and has a reason to disagree.
I'll let Jay say something and then I'll maybe throw out a recommendation.
Good afternoon. Simply put, the intent here is to make sure, because we have PDs that have been sitting around since the city was incorporated almost, a few of them on Benita Beach Road. And from staff's perspective, if something is set there for 10, 15 years, it probably was never a good design anyway. And it should be revisited and looked at and come to the standards and compliance that the city wants. We're not talking about taking away uses. So if there's a PD there, we're not saying you can't have your hotel anymore, you can't have your residential anymore. We're talking about coming to the design standards, how close you are to the road, how drive-throughs would be addressed. Those type of issues is what we're talking about. So we're talking about the development standards of the structures, not necessarily uses. So we're not taking away the uses that they would have, but rather than making sure they come into compliance. So when you do that, you sort of look at different steps here. Obviously, if somebody's not done anything for a long period of time, that's sort of a no-brainer, if you will. They haven't done anything, rules have changed, it's been a long period of time, they need to come to compliance. At the other end, if somebody is at 80% and they need to come forward, they ought to have an opportunity to complete their project the way it was designed. That's sort of the other end. And we actually have a three-year period for people to get to from one point to another point. In other words, if it's ongoing activity, no one's trying to hurt anybody as far as ongoing activity, they've got commitments for banks and so forth, we're trying to address that. Whether or not those are the absolute best numbers, those are the best evidence numbers that we came up with. So if you want to give somebody, you know, 18 months to get activated, if someone's concerned, you know, that could be an alternative. But the idea is, is that you don't have projects languishing for a long period of time, that somebody buys five, 10 years from now, and then you get a building product, a design product, that is totally out of character of what you're trying to accomplish.
Derek, isn't there a limitation on a PD that's approved for time now anyhow?
The new ones, but your prior ones do not have expiration dates. My recommendation would be, one is to, and I hate to do this because I know there may be cheers in the back, but I would continue this meeting till we had the language to clarify this, but to make the, make it clear that the applicability of this does not affect uses that are previously, so scheduled uses under a PD aren't changed, and it's just development criteria, because I don't know that that's explicitly laid out. And then the other thing I would do is I would keep the standards as far as the triggers, but maybe to address the concern that Mr. Dior pointed out and Ms. Montgomery, is maybe to have a separate application for relief process where we could lay out an equitable stopple claim, and they would have to say, like, in our particular case, this would be an issue for these reasons, lay out those standards and have it go through a public hearing for relief, rather than just lower the standards, you know.
But I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but assuming their projects are new, they have a half-life on them, meaning there's a termination date.
Correct.
I know his is, because we were here, I voted against it, but, but that was within the last three, two years or three years. I'm assuming ours is. So isn't that really, I mean, can you take that into account here?
The concern he, that Jay's bringing up is really the older ones.
That's what I'm saying. But I'm, but what you're, what you're talking about just now is some kind of off-ramp for the people who got up and talked, and I'm just questioning whether or not, since if I'm right on my presumption, that their PD ends at a certain date if they don't move on it, whether or not that's not enough together with the current.
But if we have three hurricanes in the state that don't even affect us, and you get extensions under the governor's authority of so many months, we could be talking projects that extend out for many years. So I would like to have the standards for when you could take that off-ramp laid out to you, and maybe we could tie it to your, your PD was, doesn't have an expiration date or, you know, we could come up with those standards. But I just don't, I'm nervous about doing it right here, right?
Well, I agree with that. But the concerns do seem sensible.
And I appreciate the concern about writing it out. Just to keep council aware, we do have projects that went under the moratorium with the intention of these regulations coming forward that are coming to near completion and need use permits for potential tenants. So we have been receiving a lot of feedback, and this would be the Causeway Lumber site specifically. Those folks are looking to close on certain agreements, and their uses are not currently in the uses permitted, but would be if you, when you approve this. So I think that was the only.
Can we do this in two phases then? Get that done today and then deal with these other concerns in the next month or so? Give you time to work it out.
I don't feel that the ordinance is broken out in such a way that allows that easily, especially if we're, one of the arguments we're trying to deal with is making sure that uses are not caught up by this. But I'll, I'll look to Jay since he's more.
Well, if, if we want to take that approach, and I'm going to ask Derek this, maybe some conversation back between the two of us, the section that talks about the PDs and the time limit. If we were to just remove that section and put reserved, could we pass the rest of the ordinance and then come back with an ordinance that would address just that? Because that would allow everything else to go forward, and then we'd be dealing strictly with the issue.
Brad, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have quite, what, what are we losing? What's pending if we have to do this today?
What's, what's pending is that Causeway, the developer of Causeway Lumber came in, and he agreed to, in the moratorium, to redesign his site and his building to meet the intent. He was aware of the changes that we were proposing for uses. He has, and he has three that I'm aware of, he says he has more, and I don't doubt him, cells that are pending upon this ordinance passing.
What about flipping it? Can we just do something for Causeway here? I mean, it makes sense.
I don't, I don't, I'm.
Is there any process?
Not familiar enough with the project to.
So it's the, it's the uses, he's in the historic zone. So it would be the uses in the historic zone that are allowed.
Is there a problem with Jay's idea? Because I kind of like that idea, just pulling out the.
For now, all right.
And then handling that later.
Okay.
If, I think if we can do that, then we can get together and figure out the language. And then that way, then there's nothing there preventing anybody. And, you know, basically, from my perspective, the way the ordinance is written, it just simply kicks the can down the road a few months, not, not indefinitely.
I just want you to address the issues.
Yeah.
The only other comment though, Jay, was the Horizon had mentioned uses being taken away. But are you, are you saying that it's, they're not being taken away, they're just being switched to special exceptions so we can make sure they're done in a certain way, or?
My understanding is, is that the PDs have, is their own zoning district, and they have those uses. And we're not talking about stripping away uses. We're talking about the form. We're talking about the functionality of the building, traffic, access, landscaping, building design.
So the tables that are in here aren't changing anything then?
No. And I think that's one of the things that Derek though wants to tighten up.
That's not explicitly in the ordinance.
He wants to tighten that up, which would be in the existing PD section that we would take out right now as I read it.
Here's the concern I have with passing part of this and fixing it later on. You'd be adopting an ordinance and then saying that the provisions of that ordinance that deal with where that ordinance applies come in afterwards.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I got a concern about doing that, because then it look, first of all, you'd have to, I would think at that point, you have to restart the whole process from the beginning. It wouldn't just be like passing part of it today, and then we, next meeting, we drop the last piece. Now it'd be starting it over as a new ordinance, because you're affecting what you've just approved.
And Jay, it was asked earlier, but I don't believe to you, I think it was asked to Jaclyn, and nothing was wrong with her answer, but in any form, shape, or manner, does this change density?
No.
No way, no form, not behind door number two, around corner number three?
Could we just, could we just address, address this by addressing those three items
that were brought up in discussion? I don't quite understand what their concerns were, because they didn't seem like they were whole, you know, that they were valid. But if they are valid, then why don't we just address those three things that were brought up? And not, and adopt the resolution as presented?
Could do that.
I think we need a discussion about those three individual things.
And density.
Want to do density right now?
Density, we're talking about zoning.
Understood.
And in certain portions of this area, you're allowing residential uses where there currently is not specifically designated residential uses.
Right.
So in those cases, when you're looking at an increase in density, you have a use that was not previously permitted.
But there's more.
You are not changing the comprehensive plan.
Understood.
So, so within that maximum designation, I think that there was one parcel, but it had a.
You told me before it was minimal.
It's minimal. Bottom line is minimal.
And then, I'm sorry, then Amy's.
Well, I think we're, we're trying to change this resolution for three individual issues that we could just address by understanding what the concerns are and whether they're valid or not. Like, just take them one at a time.
Well, what I'm trying to do, maybe we should, but what I'm trying to do is not get, give staff and them the chance to, it sounds like there kind of is an agreement out there, and I'm just trying to give staff and them a time to work it out, rather than all of us sit here for two hours talking about individual projects.
Well, that's the whole point. I mean, are these concerns that are valid that we're, or were we already resolved them? And they're just asking, did you really mean it when we resolved them? I think that's what they're saying.
Essentially, yes. I think that, I think that there's a request from several of the property owners for clarity on what this, how this will actually be applied. I think the intent is that you have, you have commissioned two studies, and not to go too far back in history, but you commissioned two studies, and you said, we want these changes essentially. We want us to look like what they proposed. And so at some point in time, you have to establish that break as to this is, you will follow the rules. But I think that there is a valid concern from those projects that have been recently approved, is hey, wait a second, I have it just approved within, you know, 24 months, why would I need to go back in? This is the same group of people that approved my project, and are now saying to do something different. So I, I understand that concern. I think that those projects that have brought concerns to you today could probably be handled directly, and probably don't need to be handled specifically in the ordinance, because I think that their concerns are valid, and I think this council has already blessed in some form or fashion that development. Now, the line that I think that at least staff was proposing was if you have a project that has been approved many years ago, and either it has been stalled or it has never been started, at some point in time, the change in regulations also affect you. And so we need a starting point for the discussion, and that's what was presented to you today. That's what we feel is appropriate. However, that is the, truly the definition of a policy call in terms of how council feels about that. But, yes, sir?
Can we go with what you have proposed, but then I think what you were alluding to earlier was what we kind of passed within the last two, three years, exempt them out of it, and have it only apply to anybody that was before the last two or three years, whatever.
I think if you put that date down there, that plan development's approved, post, pick a date, would be fine. And I think that we can address a lot of the concerns that were brought up today through that, through that exception.
All right.
And I don't think it would affect anything that you've done, because you just approved those projects.
Derek, you all right with that?
I'm okay with that, if you can come up with a date.
Well, everybody that's in the room, what would accommodate their projects, basically?
I'd say within the past three years.
Three years?
Does that work for everyone?
I'm not sure the exact, three and a half. Yeah, but you're about three.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's included, because I don't, Neil might actually know she was already.
That's council.
You guys might.
It was like three and a half. Let's say four. That way, everything's included.
Why don't you just?
I still don't like doing it that way, but.
Yeah. You want an actual date, so.
We want an actual. No, I want to see, I want, I want everyone to see the language and agree to it.
Well, it'd be current language, except for the one stipulation that doesn't apply to anything that came.
Well, the problem is, let's say this is the 50%. So the 50% language in here says any projects that reach more than 50%, less than 80% build out. And three paragraphs down below that says, "Plan developments that have not constructed any buildings or infrastructure shall bring their master concept plan into compliance." Well, those projects, you know, they're going to say, I just got my master concept plan approved two years ago. Is that, is it applying to that section as well? You know, where, which sections does that date apply to, which ones does it not? So I just want to sort of wrap it all in, and it's, it's not really drafted in such a way that it covers everything at once. You know, it's got different catches for different parts.
You need to do.
Well, why don't we do what Amy's suggesting then? Yeah.
Well, that, and that's why I'm suggesting that we have, leave the language as it is, have a new process where we can, they can seek relief, saying, look, you know, maybe my project's 10 years old, but I've built out two phases of it, and they were hundreds of units, or it was a massive infrastructure, and now you're asking me to do things that will affect infrastructure that's already put in place, and, you know, I didn't meet this standard, but I met that standard, but I didn't have a three-year expiration. Then I have projects that are newer that have just finished up, gone through everything, jumped through every hoop, and are now saying, now you're asking me to redesign the site. So I think a more, I think the blanket rules are good as catches, and then we can address each one individually for making sure that their specific, you know, story justifies relief. But I want to, we've been struggling with this, these provisions from the beginning, you know, trying to figure out how we're going to, because you have, you have a vision for the entire corridor, but everything along that corridor's got some level of entitlements. And a lot of it's just camping out as investment, not doing anything. And in some places, you're giving incentives with new uses, like lumber, which will encourage them to come into compliance. But since we're not doing things like raising heights or doing anything that changes major entitlements along the road, there's not really an incentive to have everyone voluntarily come in. So we have to start to draw lines to catch those projects and find out where it's appropriate to come into compliance.
Draft this in a way so that those who recently got approved, so that the sense of what you're talking about doesn't require those who recently got approved after a lot of rigorous everything, they don't have to jump through a lot of hoops.
And no financial, you know, serious burden on them, because they've already done everything now. You know, I know Ms. Neil might want some business, but others want, you know, no more lawyers, no more architects, just let them go through with the projects that they've been approving. I think it was, you know, I mean, they agreed to wait, so that's, we should be more accommodating.
So my, my recommendation then to be to not slow things down too much for everybody is to continue this to the next meeting and put it on your, your public hearing agenda then. That way, we have that language and you can adopt it. We don't have to restart the process.
Does that work, Arlene, with what?
We'll communicate with Ms., with the folks involved, and I'll work with the mayor on that, because there's a lot of outreach to the mayor on this one.
Can, can we?
Yes, Fred.
Can we make an effort to get the thing back out to all these people that might be affected, so that we don't end up with people just finding out about the day before the meeting, come in with more public comment? We got a list of who all owns these properties.
No, is it their responsibility?
Yeah, it's been noticed.
Now, it's our responsibility.
This is the second round of notice, advertised notice we've gone through. So if that's your direction, we would be continuing this hearing to the November 6th at 5:30 council meeting.
And is there any way to like tell Causeway that like as a consensus, we're kind of fine with those uses?
We'll communicate with them, and then there's also realtors involved as well, representing the potential new tenants, so we'll, we'll work through it.
All right. Do you need anything from us, what Mike is asking? You're good, do we need to say something?
I think I can formulate something from the consensus that you have here, that there's a positive will to move forward to bring them as quickly as possible, but we have these minor items.
No, I mean that we're comfortable with the changes as they affect Causeway.
Or is there any way to start processing them, you know, knowing that we're okay with those uses?
The documents they need are for closing, so CBLs and others, that's what they're.
So we're holding up closings?
Yes.
By?
When is their closing?
Couple of weeks or more.
I think that they're looking to set those dates when you pass the ordinance.
Oh, all right.
It's okay.
But they've, they've got the general agreement, they've got their space, they're just waiting to.
But their concern that they've been coming and talking to us about is they can't get a building permit until they close, because they don't get their financing until they close, so it has that ripple effect.
You have some that we're trying to get ready for season. That's, that's what, that's the concern we've been hearing.
Seasons here, so.
Yeah.
Well, what can we do for that today? I mean, we know we agree with it.
Even if you adopted this today, it doesn't go into effect for 30 days.
Yeah, but.
They weren't, no one's pulling permits tomorrow, anyway.
But if we adopt it in two, two or three weeks, it's 38's past that, and so.
So this would be November 6th would be your starting date, so that referendum.
Is there something practical we can do today? No one's contesting this thing with respect to Causeway. You do need time to work out this other stuff.
I don't know enough about their specific to come up with an argument for them.
You're comfortable with whatever they want to do, I assume?
Correct.
Okay. So what can we do to, so they can go ahead?
Is this, is this the last item that we're discussing in terms of this 50%? Is this?
No, 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 just Causeway.
Oh, with.
You're showing progress. There's no disagreement. I don't even know what the uses are, but I'm assuming from what you guys are saying, it's good.
It is.
So.
And the thing is, I think that the, the methods at our disposal might not be adequate for bank closings. If this was a situation where we're just talking about getting somebody open, I think we'd have the ability to do that. But once you start looking at having something that a bank would consider valid in terms of a permit, I don't know if we can reach that level, at least administratively.
Well, but why don't we let, do what Peter's suggesting, and then they have to figure out if the bank will accept it or not.
And I don't mind using what we have.
And then they wait until November 6th and then 30 days.
It, it sounds to me like this council wants to get those businesses in there as soon as possible.
What do we want to hold them up for?
Yeah.
And so whatever we have, if, if we can make it work, we'll make it work.
The best we can do is we have a process that allows issuing some permits pending zoning for city-sponsored rezoning. Technically, we advertise this as a map amendment to the overlay. It is a city-sponsored rezoning, does change uses.
Okay.
They can issue a permit on that. Now, that's, again, Johnson, it's up to the bank to decide what level of.
I don't know, but.
But, but a zoning verification letter with that condition in there should be.
That's actually what I was thinking.
All right. So you're good from us?
I'm good from you. I just, well, we need a motion to continue to November 6th at 5:30.
Unless you did Michael.
Yeah, I had one other comment on page five for the beach zone. It says the design features of the beach zone is four lanes of traffic maximum, but the picture above it shows five lanes, so.
We'll, we'll make that change before, it's a good thing we're continuing.
That's Hickory Boulevard.
Yeah, the beach zone, yeah.
And so the other people that had issues are all okay? So we're good?
They'll, they'll, they'll bring us any specific changes they'd like in interim. We've got a couple of weeks. But other than that, you just have, you have a motion on the table?
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCar?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
I want to vote no.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're going to move on, Derek, unless you have anything else. We're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
Good afternoon, everyone.
For the record, Kathy McGrath, and thank you for letting me read into the record. I like to talk about positive things, and I like to get credit words due. And last night at the Benita Springs Utilities Meeting, our utility system won some more awards. They received the Florida Order and Pollution Control Safety Commissions as Utility of the Year, 2018, and individual safety commendations for each of the divisions of the Operations Department, Distribution, Utility Maintenance, Water Treatment Plant, Westwater Reclamation Facility, and the Eastwater Reclamation. So I just think that's, everyone should know that, because we have a really great utility system here. Thanks for letting me read into the record.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kathy. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the city attorney's items.
Okay, the next item is just, we have to discuss the setting of the special election, or at least give you some updates on setting a special election. There were, you asked us to look into that issue. Arlene's got some numbers. I spoke with Mr. Doyle yesterday, got his input. The issue, again, as you recall, with the impending departure of Mr. O'Flynn, your charter requires that if there is not an already scheduled election for that seat and within six months, that the city will hold a special election. You currently have your elections for that seat set for November of next year. There is a March charter. The charter amendments will be on the March agenda, your prior date for elections. And speaking with the supervisor, he does not believe that anything this year is possible, because he's given his staff significant time off since there was no election this fall, and he doesn't have the resources to put it together. He did not feel the resources were available to put together before March. And so his choices were March or August, was his recommendation. Because after your March date, which there are some other cities holding special elections, including the city of Cape Coral for David Stokes, who's just, who also has resigned recently, he will then be gearing up, his office will be gearing up for the primaries and fall election, which they expect to be big. So from a staff side, the supervisor objects to anything other than one of those two dates. Our charter does require that there's a qualifying period, at least 67 days out. So that pushes whatever date you decide, you need at least enough time to meet the qualifying conditions. So we're looking for some recommendations from the council on how to proceed and moving forward with setting this up.
I do have some cost estimates provided, just so that you're aware. The last election that we did hold, the invoice that we received from Supervisor Elections was for the March 20th, 2018 municipal election, and that cost was $23,138. Staff has spoken with staff members in the Supervisor's Elections Office, and they have told us that on the high end, their estimate with no early voting for a special election is $25,000. And that did not include the early voting. And with early voting, their high-end estimate would be $45,000 for their range, their price range. And they, and I understand this would be two precincts, and that is based on an estimate of population.
Would there be no costs if we go to either the March or August elections?
But isn't the Supervisor Elections also saying we can't do it, well, logistically can't do it before March?
Logistically is his position, is that he's not prepared to do that.
And then the $25,000 or $45,000, that's the total cost?
That would be the, so the total cost...
We would have to pay them $45,000 in March? No, we don't pay anything in March.
March, we already have this, you already, with the ordinance you passed earlier today, you set the March election to deal with the changes to the charter. So he would just be adding this to that date. And so our prior qualifying period, which began in January, would apply at that point. So it'd just be as if the election had not been moved for that seat. But it would still sit open until that point.
So January would be the qualifying date for March?
That would be the beginning.
So then our decision is March or August? Is that how we look at it, or...?
Unless you want to ask for a different date for us to push the issue with the supervisor to make it happen. But his indication to me was that he was not going to do that.
Right. Okay.
So we're looking at March or August?
Correct.
Unless you want to pay $45,000.
Right, unless you want to pay $45,000.
No, but even then, logistically, Doyle's saying that he doesn't have the staff to do it. No?
So after March.
He's saying absolutely, without qualification, that he has no staff this year to do it for something in, like, December, because they're on vacation. And he said by that, after that, he is preparing for the March elections, and then he's preparing for the fall elections after that. And so he would object to anything other than. So his position to me, obviously, was March or August, based on that.
I say we go with March. Well, Peter, what do you say?
Well, I'm interested in what council, I have, well, so my view is there needs to be, under Florida law, there needs to be an agreement between the city and the Supervisor Elections. Derek's indicated absolutely not through December. In my view, sometime in January is more than reasonable. That's almost four months since the time that, the date that I indicated. It would give plenty of time for an election. I'm in no way commenting on the Supervisor Elections. I just comment that, you know, Naples this year, when they had a vacancy, they had the, they talked to their Supervisor Elections, and they were able to do an election on one seat. But they were at large, it was a citywide election. It was the entire city of Naples, and that was done in 73 days. So that's why I'm comfortable with...
But that was also a time when the Supervisor said, yes, I have staff and I can do it.
But that's up to him to express a view. I'm not, you know, telling him what his job is. I'm just, I'm just commenting that there are many elections that are held in short a period of time. I'm not here to tell anybody what his job is.
No, no, and I know you weren't, but the point that they decided to do this a while back...
It was in, it was in February of, the Naples example was in February. They had an election on April 2nd. There are plenty of other cities that have similar timeframes. So my view, from the perspective of the city, is that a reasonable time is in January. Yes, for my view, that's what it is.
Mm-hmm.
And I also just have a detail, which is your election cost $23,000 with early voting, and we're getting a price quote of $45,000 with early voting a year later. So I don't quite understand that. I'm sure it's legit, but I don't quite understand it. That's my view. And I guess my other point is, the reason I gave 60 days' notice is to minimize the gap in the seat. Having said that, you know, the mayor is a, used to represent the district, and he represents the entire city, so it's not like it's...
I know.
Yeah. And the other thing I said to people is that the whole council represents the entire city. I mean, I deal with stuff on the beach, I deal with stuff in your district, et cetera, so. That's my view.
Mike?
Yeah, I wouldn't be comfortable with going anything shorter than March. I mean, we really don't have the option anyway, but I just feel there's got to be enough time for people that are interested in the position to get things going, get their packets, file, all that stuff. Because typically, you know, we put the packets out a year in advance to the elections, and most people, you know, start that process, you know, probably a good six months before the election, so. And it just, as long as we give them enough time to, you know, know, be aware that there's a election earlier than normal, and have the right amount of time to make their decision. So, I mean, I guess I'm fine with either the March or August, because I'd prefer not to pay for the election, but I think March would give us enough time.
Mr. Mayor, what are your thoughts?
Well, I've expressed my thoughts to Derek. I've talked with Arlene, I've spoken with Matt, I've spoken with Tommy Doyle. And the options in his mind really are, as Derek's outlined, March or August, based on his capacity to run an election. I agree with Mike. There's, in my mind, it's extremely foolish to pay for an election, especially when we have two or three, well, I guess two options coming up for elections, where it wouldn't cost us anything. And, you know, we've had a lot of uncomfortable discussions up here. We've had a lot of great discussions. But I also don't feel comfortable making a decision on when we're going to have this with the individual here that's resigning, part of the process. So that's, you know, that's one man's thought, one person's thought. You know, he's expressed his thoughts, which I think are, you know, very rational, and he has his reasons for stepping down. But I think as a council, in my mind, we would be better served to make a decision once he has stepped down. And we can, you know, have an open discussion. And he won't feel awkward, we won't feel awkward, or maybe nobody feels awkward anyway. But whatever the case may be, when his resignation is effective, I think we make a final decision.
I like that idea.
He could change his mind, he may not resign. And then, and then what have we done?
Yeah.
No, I can't do that, it's irrevocable.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. But what I'm saying is, it's like horse before the cart, cart before the horse, water, lake, mirage, we don't know yet, right? We don't, we're dealing with some unknowns.
I don't think it matters whether Peter's sitting here or not, you know, because he's already, has his resignation. I think what we should vote on and consider are options. So the option is, we pick March, which, I would suggest March, because that's the closest one that the Supervisor of Election has already presented to us. Or we say, that's not good enough, we wanted to have it in January, or whatever date we think we're going to pick, and then just force the issue and then be, open up to a cost that we wouldn't have to bear if we waited to March. So I think from a sensible point of view, we should do it in March, and I make a motion that we pass this and have the election in March.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, there's been no second, the motion fails. Okay. We, certainly, this isn't an item that we had to vote on, it's a discussion item. I think we'll probably discuss it most meetings moving forward. Delightful, so looking forward to it. Okay? City manager's items.
Mayor, it's been a year since our enter into a letter of engagement with Ray Robinson for Law Services. The contract does not have an expiration date, but we did want to give you some advice, some advise you on some...
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
As well, of course, there's a notice between the two, should you have any other considerations. But Derek wanted to give you an update on the portion of the contract that discussed the retainer and the potential reimbursements to the city.
All right, so you all have received the memo, we're still working on the final accounting, and I know I gave you a preview of this earlier meeting. Based on the adjusted retainer, we came up with the retention of Ms. Sanseverino as Assistant City Manager. We proposed $300,000 a year payable at $25,000 a month retainers, which we would bill against. And if we were, obviously, coming into a new relationship, trying to keep costs down for both parties, we set up an incentive structure that if, at the end of the day, we came in lower than what we had proposed, we would remit 70% of that back to the city. I had originally estimated, I think during the selection process, that I thought we would be right-sized for this city, given the level of services you have and what you have going on, somewhere around a quarter million dollars. I was just shy of that. With the, at billings currently up to $218,000 for the whole year, with that, we would be rebating back to the city just under $60,000. So with the portion that Ray Robinson keeps as basically an incentive to keep the costs down, your total cost would be $243,000 for the year, which you had indicated that you want to see reduction. I looked, if you look further in the memo, you'll see the actual billings by which departments we're drawing on. And obviously, you see, the litigation is one that I think will be changing in the year going forward. That number reflects three cases. Anglers Paradise, which is resolved, BG Mine, which we hope to resolve, and then WCI, which will be resolved one way or the other. And so therefore, I'm not recommending any changes to the retainer arrangement next year and hope to be able to remit back even more money to the city. Other than that, everything's been going smoothly.
Fabulous job, and thank you.
Hope you get a nice bonus.
So do we have to extend your contract now?
It just, it just carries on year after year. I think there's a minimum of 40 years. But the only other thing that I was going to change is I'm going to recommend, and working with Ms. Wright, is that we will do the remittance at the end of the budget cycle so that that shows up in each year's fiscal year, rather than carrying over an extra month, October.
Mm-hmm, that's a good idea.
Good idea.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
And you get to put up with me, Rooney, to boot, huh? A bonus. Great work, great work. Do you need a motion?
Nope.
You don't need anything, okay. Dynamite. Okay, Arlene, sorry.
The only other item I have to mention is that at our next meeting, we'll have CBR here to go over the final selection of the bamboo and the additional parcels. We have had Councilmember Karamba have an individual meeting. If anyone wants an individual meeting, they're happy to do so, to kind of talk about how they want to work through the marketing materials. And then we could give you some feedback on where staff is as well, CBR on some of those additional parcels. Otherwise, we'll come prepared for the next meeting, and we'll ask for some decisions on how you'd like to move forward, so they can have all the marketing ready, and then they'll start putting the feelers out before the holidays.
Okay. Great. Dynamite. Okay. Matt, do you have anything?
Nope.
No? Okay. Mayor and council member items. Amy?
Just two quick ones. I had some positive communication from members from my community about the Taco Fest, which they thought was wonderful.
I drove down by there, I didn't stop, yeah, it was busy.
And they said it was very well-attended and very well-organized. So that's a positive event comment. And the other point I want to make is that just yesterday, I went to a ribbon cutting for the Everglades Winter Garden on one of their glass houses, where they did their butterfly house. And I had, I was trying to remember when I was there last. I think I was there the summer when my grandchildren were there. It is so unbelievably changed. And they've done a great job, and these glass houses are such an asset. And I think, and I think there's supposed to be another ribbon cutting for the Tea House, which is sometime in November. They told me the date, but I can't recall it. But I encourage everybody to, when we get the notice, that we all go to that. So there's a lot of positive things happening there, and we should be happy about it. And if anyone had been there after the hurricane, I remember going through, saying, this place is gone, I mean, that went through my mind. It's just remarkable. So those people are doing very, very well. And, you know, the board and everything is just working. And thank you to all these wonderful donors that we have within Benita Springs that have come forward and made it possible to make this, hopefully, a jewel. So it's great.
Great, thank you. Laura?
No, great. And I'll just say, they have white, a full white peacock. It's amazing.
Very good. Nice. Peter?
Yeah, Kathy was down there and said, similar to what Amy said.
It was unbelievable.
I mean, you know, I guess I haven't been here in a few months, and...
Yeah, I mean, and the other thing, in a couple of weeks, I think, they said in two to three weeks, they're going to have an update to their alligator display with a, somehow a fountain coming off of one of those wonderful trees. I mean, you should see them. And they said that within a few weeks, they're going to have that going. So once that's done, it's going to be amazing, so.
Kathy?
It's great.
Nice.
And I got one piece of housekeeping. Peter and I are on the NPO together. Fred's the alternate, I'm stepping off, so council needs to appoint someone to step in for me. I mean, I'm assuming it's Fred, he's the alternate, but it's up to council. And I would do that as soon as you can, get them going, whoever it is.
Okay, very good. Does anybody have an interest in the NPO?
I'll talk to you about it.
Okay. Okay, very good. Dynamite. Thanks, Peter. Mike?
I'm good, we're ready for zoning.
Ready for zoning? Okay, Fred? That's right, zoning at one. Fred?
I'm going to be bringing forth an item from, for the Tree Committee that will evoke a little bit of discussion, but they are looking at the Land Development Code, our landscaping requirements, as well as maintenance requirements of landscaping. And we'll give you some pictures of reasons why we think some of this needs to be looked at. Most of the committee is made up of arborists and people that have extensive experience and knowledge and training and education in landscaping. And we just want to make sure, before they go to the work of doing this, that we're, we as a council are interested in seeing recommendations for changes to the landscape code and the landscape maintenance code. So that'll, I'll put that together in a green sheet. There'll be a few pictures here and there to show examples of what happens with the current code.
Okay. Great, thanks. Just a couple of quick things. Last week, I took part in a focus group, if you will, up at Lee Health Coconut Point with some folks from Astero, and obviously the CEO, Antonucci, and the top brass at Lee Health, if you will, looking for feedback. So they are very committed, obviously, to that building, and very committed to making it work, and disappearing of town lines, if you will, even though, as I pointed out to them, NCH is right on the city line. And, but they're really looking at, obviously, making that very successful and integrating new medical programs. So it was a good, it was good feedback, good give and take. If you want some more information on that, I can certainly, they're going to be coming back to us with some information, so I'll certainly share that, what's working, what's not working. They, you know, they want to, they really want it to be successful, and I think it's off to a good start. With the Outreach Committee, the Vice Chairman, Tony Lee, and I have started a mentorship program together at the Benita Springs Elementary, just starting, so don't have much to report, other than we're getting going there. Jim Bosch, the former mayor of Astero and current council member, they're in a rotation up in Astero, I think, as you know. And we went up to speak with the county commissioners to see if there is, the 2020 land that was purchased has been named Larry Keiker Park. And we went up to discuss with the county commissioners about...
And we went up to discuss with the county commissioners about potentially starting a nonprofit foundation that would raise money to improve 2020 with paths, potentially, I guess Peter would be some bike, I don't know about bikeways, I can't necessarily say that, but I guess that would be part of it. Bridges and improving the property so people can actually access it, see it, walk through it on a trail or a path. So I'll keep you posted there. And then tonight, at long last, you've heard me talk about this for months, but tonight at 6:30, Chauncey Goss will be here to lead our water town hall meeting, along with Dr. Mike Parsons from the FGC Water School, and Mayor Kevin Ruane from Sanibel, who's also the president of the Florida League of Mayors. So Matt and I actually have a pretty good full day with Chauncey. We're going to take him around and show him some things in town, so we'll report back later on. And he's actually, I even got Chauncey going out for a little canoe ride on the Imperial River. So he's going to get here at 2 o'clock and leave here probably about 9 o'clock. So he'll be, it'll be a good full day, and I certainly hope to see you at 6:30 or at some other point. So thank you so much. That's what I have, and at this point, we'll move on to public comment. If there's members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
You do, I would be back.
Oh, good to see you. How you doing? Took the lunch break and everything?
Yes. Do we have to use the Supervisor of Elections to conduct a one-district election? Okay.
Public comment, sir.
Yes, you, Mayor, you represent everybody, but that means everybody except these members and voters of District 4 actually have two representatives. If we don't have, Peter, then we only have one.
I love District 4.
I, I feel like...
No heckling from the bench.
I feel like if I have one councilman that represents me, that's the one I go to. There are some very important issues that are going to come up that affect our district. I think we need a representative. I don't think the cost is that outrageous. I don't understand why it's so much more. I don't think it's a big item in terms of everything the city spends. I understand that between now and December would be a difficult time. I do not understand why it can't be done in January. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? Motion to adjourn?
Minutes.
Minutes.
Oh, do we have approval? Approval of the minutes, thank you, Fred, for October 2nd.
So moved.
So moved in a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Okay, motion to adjourn? We are adjourned, and why don't we just zone?